Good morning, Lampton County Council. Welcome to November. I'll have Mr. Tifo call the roll, please.
Good morning. Counselor Arnold, please.
Present.
Thank you, Counselor Bird.
Present.
Thank you, Counselor Bushy.
Here.
Thank you, Counselor Bradley. Counselor Bradley? Counselor Bride?
Present.
Thank you, Counselor Cook.
Present.
Thank you, Counselor Ferguson.
Present.
Thank you, Deputy Warden Hand.
Present.
Thank you, Counselor Lucely.
Present.
Thank you, Counselor Miller.
Present.
Thank you, Counselor Napper.
Present.
Thank you, Counselor Rumbos.
Present.
Thank you, Counselor Stark.
Present.
Thank you, Counselor Beeny.
Present.
Thank you, Counselor Weaver.
Present.
Thank you, Counselor White.
Present.
Thank you, and Warden Merril, we have a quorum, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tifo. We acknowledge that this land on which we are gathered today is part of the ancestral land of the Chipewa, Odoa, and Potawatomi peoples, referred to collectively as the Anishinaabe. It is through the connection of the Anishinaabe with the spirit of the land, water, and air that we recognize their unique cultures, traditions, and values. Today, as treaty people, we have shared responsibility to act with respect for the environment that sustains all life, protecting the future for those generations to come. I'd ask of any disclosures of community interest at this time, if any. Seeing none, I would take a motion to go in camera, please. Goodbye, Counselor Bushy, seconded by Deputy Warden Hand, all in favor. That's Carrie, thank you very much. Well, welcome back, council. Welcome to any of the public that's watching this morning as well. I'd ask Mr. Tifo to rise and report from in camera, please.
Good morning, everyone. This morning, County Council met for one minute in closed session to review and approve its in-camera minutes of its October 6, 2021 meeting. That's all I have to report.
Okay, thank you. Number seven is our board of health update. Looking for Dr. Renaday, imagine he's... There he comes, right there. Good morning, Dr. Renaday. Whenever you're ready for your update, we're ready.
Good morning, can you hear me?
That's very good.
Okay, great, so I'll just pause and ask the host or the moderator to enable me to share my screen, and then I can give you my update. So hopefully, when that's ready, I'll just give it a second, and then I'll see if I can share my screen for you. So you should see a presentation and not me? Is that right? Okay. So, good morning, everyone. I will just carry on. I have a few things to kind of keep you updated on with respect to what's going on with COVID, but I think it's probably wise to just start with an overview of where we are sort of in terms of generally in the pandemic. And so just sharing some statistical information that we know from sort of what's happening around the world, what's happening nationally, and then what's happening locally, right? So the most recent EPI report from the World Health Organization says that the world has had 243 million confirmed cases of COVID since the beginning of the pandemic and close to 5 million deaths. Nationally, the Public Health Agency of Canada, as of a few days ago, said that we've had 1.7 million cases since the beginning of the pandemic and over 29,000 deaths. And locally, of course, we've had just shy of 4,200 cases since the beginning of the pandemic as of yesterday, and 71 people have died in our community. So that's just a reminder that the pandemic has had impacts everywhere, but also a reminder that the fatality rate, you know, does vary between 1% and 2%, and it sort of stays there no matter where you go. If we look at the age distribution of cases in Canada, this is a screenshot of information that's available on the Public Health Agency of Canada's website. You can see that when you go from the ages of under 19 to over 80, lots of people have gotten COVID. There's no, you know, there's no clear, there's sort of a clear... What's the word? Prevalence in this age group, right? You've got 20% of the cases totally have been, in total, have been in the under-19 age group, close to 20 have been in the 20% to 29% age group, and so forth. But of course, when you look at the mortality from this disease, the distribution on that is completely reversed, right? So 8% of our cases have been in those over 70, but they account for about 80% of the deaths that we've had from this disease. So you can see, again, although everyone is at risk of exposure, the risk of serious and severe disease does dramatically increase as you get into the older age groups, and that is consistent, and that is what we find. So it's important that, you know, you are going to get reports of fatalities in younger age groups, but when you look at the overall picture, that does not represent the vast majority of what happens, nor does it represent the vast majority of the risk of severe disease, which is really in this population here. Okay. Throughout the pandemic, we've had a number of different public health measures. There's screening, there's the request for people to self-isolate when they're ill, there's testing, there's source control, travel and gathering restrictions, capacity limits, and shutdowns. And vaccines have emerged on the scene, you know, just within the last year. And I think the important thing to remember about vaccines, and I've said this to you and others before, is that vaccines are the intervention that actually has the highest quality and quantity of evidence around them. They have the highest certainty of risk and benefit. That is, we know very clearly what the risks are, and we know very clearly what the benefits are, and we have, you know, good information that vaccines result in the highest impact of any of the other interventions that we have tried. So that's important to keep in mind. What is the real impact of COVID vaccines, right? So I think that's an important question. What we have found over the course of the pandemic is that they reduce symptomatic disease. So this is also Public Health Agency of Canada data that shows that the vast majority of cases since vaccines became available have been in unvaccinated people. They reduce severe illness, so the vast majority of hospitalizations have been in unvaccinated people, and they reduce deaths, so the vast majority of deaths have been in unvaccinated people. It's not a perfect system. There are people who are fully vaccinated who appear in all of these buckets, whether they're cases, hospitalizations, or deaths, but you can see that the likelihood of being fully vaccinated and having severe illness is much, much lower. And this data is on cases who are 12 and over, so people who are eligible to be vaccinated. There is one caveat with this data, that it does include a time point, you know, starting from January, February, when vaccines were not widely available to a large portion of the population. And so if you look at a later time period, it's possible that this number would go down a little bit, and that this number would come up a little bit. But in general, we still see that the majority of cases and the majority of hospitalizations and so forth are in unvaccinated people. The other thing that we talk about is whether or not COVID vaccines affect transmission, and I'm gonna, I need to share with you information about what we generally think about that right now. So this is our local Lampton County case counts, right? That started back in March of 2020, all the way up to now, and you can see we've had sort of four kind of groupings or waves of disease of prevalence within the community, and then periods of time where it's low, but there's still some activity, right? Just for information's sake, we've overlaid the time point at which mandatory masking came into place across all of Ontario, not the time points at which different jurisdictions did it. And the gray bars here represent periods of time where, you know, lockdowns or restrictions were in play. So there's a time bar here, there's a time bar here, and a time bar here. And you can see that we've had some, you know, we've talked about lockdowns and what they do, and you can see that they do successfully interrupt chains of transmission, but only for as long as you actually have that happening. And we know some of the negative consequences that we've seen from those lockdowns. When you start talking about vaccination rates, this is an overlay of vaccination coverage rates of people who have had at least one dose in Lampton County. And you can see that as that vaccination coverage rate goes up, you get a strong and fairly consistent downward picture or trend in the cases of disease. And I'll note about this peak here, that again, a majority of these people are also unvaccinated. So if you were to reduce that risk further by vaccinating these people, you would see a peak that probably looked a little bit like this, right? So that's really important to keep in mind, that this intervention gives us sustained effects, and it also is largely independent of what people do in terms of their behavior, how they're gathering, what else they're doing. And that's also a nice feature of how vaccines work, that they don't rely on consistent behavior change from a number of people to be done routinely for a long period of time. Okay. When you think about any given interaction and the risk that it could pass on COVID from this person to this person, you have to think about what happened to this person before they got here, and what happens to this person after they leave here, right? So this is an encounter that could bring about transmission of disease. And so really, the thing is, not everybody who's exposed is going to go on to get disease. A certain portion of those people will not go on to get disease, they will not be infected, and some will be infected. So if this person is coming into this interaction and they are infected with COVID, the chance that they pass COVID on to this next person is really guided by three things. One is the distance that they keep from that person, two is the duration that they spend with that person, and three is something I'm gonna call dispersion, which is characteristic of both the interaction and the environment, you know? Is it a hot sweaty nightclub that's confined with poor ventilation and people are shouting and yelling? Or is it a place where there's more ventilation, more circulation of air, people are, you know, and the environment doesn't support as much dispersion, right? So those are some features that are going to decide, or, you know, increase or decrease the risk that this interaction is actually going to transmit disease from this person to this person. And then when this person leaves that interaction, they could go on and become uninfected, or they could become infected and then be either sick themselves or have the possibility of transmitting to another person. So here's what we know about vaccines. COVID vaccines are thought to reduce the chance that any given exposure will lead to infection. That is, they drive more people in this direction of being uninfected rather than being infected. So that makes any interaction between two vaccinated people less risky than the same interaction between two unvaccinated people. And so where we have had conversations about the effectiveness of COVID vaccines at preventing transmission, now we're just talking about this small space here, where if a person is vaccinated and despite their vaccination they are infected, we do need to have more research that tells us whether that person is just as likely to transmit COVID to another person as an unvaccinated person or not. But that is after they have already been infected, which is a lower likelihood than a person who is unvaccinated in the first place, okay? So although we need more research in this area, a vaccinated person is less likely to come into this interaction being infected, and a vaccinated person is less likely to go out of that interaction being infected. Okay. Another question that I get fairly often is how is this all going to end? When can we just be done with it? I think it's important, as we think through that possibility, to remember that 20% of our population remains unvaccinated, which creates a potential system risk from an overwhelming burden of care if too many people get sick at once. Oh, sorry about that, gotta go back here. And remember that most of the world remains unvaccinated, and that creates a risk of variant escape and prolonging circulation of this disease, right? So given that context, there are four possibilities that we consider, although one we eliminate right away. So one possible pandemic endpoint is boom to bust. You get a big wave, it's over, and then it never really comes back. That's not likely at this point, that's not what we see. It does happen with other severe diseases that have focal outbreaks, and so I've left it there, but that's not what we're looking at. Now we're looking at at least these three possibilities and perhaps a few more, but these are the three main ones. One is that there could be variant escape, which is that there's a new strain that makes people who were previously protected now newly susceptible because they don't have protection from the vaccine against a variant. That requires strong disease surveillance systems to be in place, and testing systems to be in place to be able to detect new variants and also to find out what their impact is on vaccinated people. So, you know, in some sense, we have those systems in place, and it's important to keep them going, but there's a global effort here as well to make sure that we stay on top of variants and ensure that new variants that come up are still being protected against by the vaccine. The other possibilities are what I'm gonna call seasonal waves or ongoing baseline. So seasonal waves is the possibility where COVID establishes itself almost like influenza, and you have a seasonal circulation. We know that there's a time of year where there's gonna be more of it and a time of year where there's gonna be less of it, and some seasons might be worse than others in terms of disease burden, just like some influenza seasons are worse than others. And we might consider some seasonal precautions around that if that were the case. There's also the possibility that there's an ongoing baseline, right? So if you think about the common cold, there's an ongoing baseline rate of the common cold in any given month or time of year, right? And so you might get many waves throughout the year where it seems like it's a little bit worse, but you just always have this constant baseline of disease that we accommodate, we live with, and then we might be considering extra precautions only for the people who are at highest risk, but we start to accept an ongoing baseline risk of COVID as one of the many circulating diseases like the common cold, right? Part of getting there means that, you know, involves us moving to a place where the risk of this disease approximates the risk of the common cold, and one of the ways that you get there is by vaccinating people so that they don't have very severe disease. So I think that those were the things that, so I can't give a timeframe on when that's going to end, I can tell you in general that global pandemics take about two years, and we're closing on that mark. The problem, though, is that we also have a large population in the world who hasn't been vaccinated yet, and the disease needs to circulate, either we need to vaccinate those people, or the disease also needs to circulate through enough people that there's some level of ongoing immunity to reduce circulation. And so I can't give you a timeframe, but I can give you a sense of kind of what it could look like as we start to move out of this. And so I think what I will do is leave it, I think that was all that I had. Oh, no, sorry, one last one. So there are residual uncertainties that we need to acknowledge, right? We don't know how long people are protected, either if they've been infected or if they've been vaccinated, just because this disease itself is so new and the vaccines are new. We don't know if there's gonna be variant escape, although I would suggest that if it were to happen, it would have probably happened by now with the level of circulation in the world, but it is still a possibility that we need to keep. but in the world, but it is still a possibility that we need to keep an eye on. And we're not really sure what's the true level of vaccine coverage that we need in order to protect the health system and to interrupt ongoing transmission. So there's some, some groups that are saying you actually need closer to 90, 95% in order to interrupt transmission. And certainly we've seen significant health system pressures in communities that have had upwards of 80% of their, of their community vaccinated, right? And so the, the thinking behind that is just again, it's the simple reason that if enough people who are unvaccinated get sick at a given time, the health system could be overloaded with the need to care for those patients and not be able to do all of the other things that it does. So how do we go through this? How do we keep moving forward through this, right? Well, we have to start normalizing while also assessing these different risks around us. We've talked about how lockdowns and the flip, flip flop is not really sustainable. And so we have to move towards a more sustainable risk tolerance for COVID. We can't live in the space of being absolutely intolerant of risk. And we cannot live in the space of being fully tolerant of all COVID risk because people will get very sick and some will die. So we have to find a middle ground here where we agree on some risk tolerance. And we also need to have our ongoing surveillance to inform our response. And that's both nationally and provincially, and in some sense, a little, a little portion of that is local. Okay, I'm gonna leave it there and, and I think that's all that I had. So I'll stop my screen share, you should be able to see me.
Okay, we can talk around again. Thank you very much for that update. Any questions for Dr. Renade this morning? Counselor Brock, please.
Uh, thanks, Warden Marriott. Uh, to you, Dr. Renade, I see Lampton Public Health, Chatham Kent Public Health put in some stricter guidelines as far as supporting facilities and things like that. What has happened in Lampton and Chatham Kent that hasn't happened in the rest of the province for yous to put these into place?
Sure, good question, counselor. So, uh, nothing specifically has happened here that's different from other places. So I'll tell you a few things that happened around us. One of the things that happened around us was that our neighboring jurisdictions have put in place restrictions that require people who use those facilities to be immunized as long as they are eligible to be immunized. And that extends to everyone despite the exemptions that were covered under the provincial regulations. So there's one aspect of this is that if you're a small pocket of a community surrounded by communities that have a different rule and you don't have a different rule, that is, or you have a more permissive rule, that that could enable the movement of people who are largely unvaccinated into your facilities and create the possibility for transmission risk. But here's the other side of it, and I think this is the important piece that I, I, well, there's two, two important pieces. So it's not specifically that there's something different here. What is, what is important to remember is that if the province believes that it is risky enough for an 18-year-old to be fully vaccinated in order to participate in indoor recreational activity, then medically speaking, that risk also applies to people who are 12 plus. So it is the exact same transmission risk. Now, if we were talking about people who were under, under 10 or so, there's some good evidence that kids in that category don't really spread this disease, this disease in the same way. And so, you know, we would look very carefully before implementing it for those younger age groups. But once you get up past 12, those kids spread disease in exactly the same way than an adult does. And so what we're trying to do is make sure that the rules with respect to the risk of transmission apply to people who have the same risk. So that's the first piece. The second piece is that, uh, one of the things around our public health guidelines is that, that in a vaccinated person who has a high risk of exposure does not need to isolate unless they have symptoms. Whereas an unvaccinated person who has a high exposure, like a known exposure that is high risk to a person with COVID, does have to isolate. And so by ensuring that the people who are school-aged, who are participating in these activities are vaccinated, we also ensure that if they're exposed and all of those exposures would be considered high risk, that they can actually continue to go to school unless they have symptoms. So that's another, that's another benefit of this, of this rule. So there's three pieces, right? One, preventing largely unvaccinated people from using community facilities and bringing the risk of infection with them. Two, uh, applying the risk, the, the, the intervention to everybody who presents the similar, like the same risk. And then three, the added benefit of, for school-aged children, it enables them to continue to be in school if they are exposed at one of these facilities.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Runbotes.
Yes, can you talk about natural immunity and how that impacts the possibility of transmission?
Yes, I can tell you what we, what we currently think about it. And so what we currently think about natural immunity is that if you have recently had COVID, you are unlikely to get COVID-19 again within six months of having recovered from that infection. Beyond six months, we're not really sure. There are cases of reinfection, but they are rare. So it's possible that you, you, well, we know that you have at least six months of, of good immunity after that infection, if you recovered. What we don't know is if it lasts longer than that. And similarly, I would say with vaccines, we're still exploring what, what is the full duration of that immunity, right? We think it's gonna be longer than six months, um, but we're, we don't, we don't know. We know that it's really good for preventing hospitalizations and death even past six months, but it looks like there may be waning immunity to symptomatic infection after six months. So we're still looking at that piece. But with respect to nat, nat, the, sorry, natural immunity, if you, if you have COVID, we, we look at about a six-month timeframe where it's unlikely that you would get COVID. And if you were exposed to COVID, it's unlikely that you would, um, re, re, you know, that the symptoms would reappear. Six months, sorry, to summarize, it's about, we think it's about six months.
Okay. Any other questions for the doctor? Seeing none. I guess we're gonna let you off easy this morning, doctor. Thanks so much for your update and we'll chat to you again next time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to item number eight, donor recognition. Lampton County's been very lucky again in 2021. We know firsthand the benefit of living in a community that cares. Approximately 1,500 donors give annually to enhance a wide array of county programs and services. These charitable gifts help provide the high-quality and affordable services that respond to the needs of our community. Here are some of the various, very generous donations made this year. Roger Haye and Trevor Roberts each donated $5,000 towards the Canetara Cabin Restoration Project at the Lampton Heritage Museum. Several local organizations made very generous contributions towards our local COVID-19 vaccination clinics, including Lampton Basis with a donation of $60,000. Hydro One with a donation of $5,000. Blue Otter Power with a donation of $10,000. And Enbridge with a donation of $75,000. Lampton Circles received a $9,000 donation from the Seaway Monarch Club and a $10,000 grant from the Sarnia Community Foundation, as requested by their donors, the Hogan Family Fund and Cassin Family Fund. Lampton Circle sincerely appreciates the ongoing generosity from our caring community. Lampton Heritage Museum received several artifact donations to add to the museum's collection, including a cupboard from a Sarnia log cabin and three paintings from Ron Van Horn and Scott Ferguson, and a collection of original sketches by the late artist Barbara Perrin from Mark Morand. Imperial Sarnia Site donated a tri-shot bike and iPads for Marshall Golden Manner through the Manor Auxiliary. Moell's Gift donated $79,000 to the Ontario Student Nutrition Program, Lampton. And the Bill Auxiliary, Lodge Auxiliary, and Manor Auxiliary all continue to provide incredible support for their respective homes. On behalf of Lampton County Council, I would like to extend a serious thank you to all the donors who have generously given to the county of Lampton this year. The links, the links to these videos that I recorded in the last couple of weeks will be found on the website after today's meeting. Would now move to item number nine, delegations. I would accept a motion to allow delegations. Moved by Counselor White, signed by Counselor Loosely, all in favor. That's Carrie. First delegation is Wes Armstrong, Director, Gas Storage and Pipeline Operations, Enbridge Gas Incorporated, and Brian Lenny, Senior Advisor, Municipal Affairs, and Stakeholder Relations. Enbridge Gas, Inc. will be presenting to County Council the details of Enbridge's 2023 Don Corona Project and to request a letter or resolution of support for the project to be included in their Ontario Energy Board application. Uh, just remind the presenters you have 10 minutes.
Hey, great, good morning and thank you very much for the opportunity to come before you today to provide an update on our Enbridge Gas proposed Don to Corona Pipeline Project in Lampton County. So as just introduced, my name's Wes Armstrong, the Director of Gas Storage and Pipeline Operations. And I'm based out of our Don Operations Center here on Ben Path Line. And with me today is Brian Lenny, the Senior Advisor, Municipal Affairs. And he's gonna join me in answering any questions as needed that might come up. Next slide, please. Okay. So before I begin, I just want to talk a bit about our number one priority, which is, which is safety, of course. And I know we haven't continued to invest heavily in our system to ensure the safety of all residents, businesses, and industries. With over $2.9 billion invested over the past eight years in just system integrity, uh, that doesn't include our large expenditures on expansion or general day-to-day operations. We're safety-focused, full stop on that. We performed 250 integrity inspections between 2019 and 2020. We held 41 emergency exercise drills, and we monitor our systems 24/7/365 from our control centers at Don, Chatham, and Corona. So what's the purpose of this project? In order to maintain the safe and reliable operation of our system and to continue meeting the natural gas needs of our customers, we're replacing some of our older natural gas storage and transmission assets at the St. Clair Township area, specifically at the Corona Compressor Station. And due to the scope of the project, the Ontario Energy Board approval of the project is required before construction can begin. So the proposed project includes two main components. It's decommissioning of seven of the 11 natural gas compressors currently located at the Corona Compressor Station, which are approaching the end of their life cycle. The Corona Compressor Station is located on Tecumseh Road, as you may know, in St. Clair Township. Even though we're decommissioning those, those compressors, it still remains a critical asset for us. There's no change to its status overall. And to that point, we're currently investing over $60 million in rebuilding certain assets at that site. So the second part of the project is the construction of a new 36-inch diameter steel natural gas pipeline between the Corona Compressor Station and the Don Operations Center. And the proposed pipeline route will be shown on the following slides. Would be installed in an existing private easement where possible. And generally, there's an existing natural gas pipeline corridor there that already contains two 30-inch pipelines. So in order to minimize overall disturbance, we wanna use that existing easement. And this would be a third pipeline that would run, run through there. The project is subject to OEB approval. Uh, and if approved, construction would begin early 2023 and be completed by the end of 2024. And so some more details here. This project will be an economic driver in the local area. The estimated project cost at this time is between $200 and $250 million. And temporary local construction jobs will be created by the project. We estimate roughly 300 to 400 jobs at peak. And Enbridge Gas will source local materials, goods, and services wherever possible. The OEB project application will be submitted later this month. And for the construction timeline, we see archaeological fieldwork and other pre-construction fieldwork start in 2022. And then we'd have construction from winter 2023 to winter 2024. So roughly, um, ending in December 2024. And Enbridge Gas will work with the county and township staff to obtain all permits and requirements. So that's the proposed route there, um, about 19 kilometers as the crow flies across here. And I know that's a tough map to read, so, uh, I'll point out that there, these maps are also available on our Enbridge Gas website if you want, uh, a much better map and have a closer look at it. As I mentioned, the project will be constructed primarily in private easement in the existing pipeline corridor with those two 30-inch pipelines I mentioned earlier. There will be a need for road crossings, and Enbridge Gas will work with county and township staff on preferred crossing methods and procedures. There will also be a need to cross drains and drainage areas. And we'll work with county and township staff as well as local landowners and regulatory agencies on these crossings. The benefit of this route is the minimal distance because it's, and because it's a, an existing pipeline corridor for nearly all the route. So your voice can make a difference. And we're seeking council's consideration of a letter or resolution of support from council for, for this project, which we would include as part of our OEB application. Um, and I would point out, and, and we're very grateful for the letters we've received from Don Euphemia and from Township of St. Clair, as well as from the Sarnia Lampton Chamber of Commerce and the Sarnia Lampton Economic Partnership. So those are all, all very helpful. And the OEB application process will review the need and the community support for the proposed infrastructure. Um, and a letter would certainly demonstrate that support and need. Previous resolutions of support on other projects have made a difference. And, uh, and so again, we pretty much appreciate that. And our commitment is to keep you informed. We'll work with county and township staff on all project requirements. We'll keep council informed with updates on the project as the project progresses. And we'll keep the community informed as well. So with that, we'll just go to Q and A, and Brian and I'd be happy to take any questions from, from council.
Thank you for that presentation, Mr. Armstrong. Are there any questions for either Mr. Armstrong or Lenny? Uh, maybe we can get the screen back to, oh, there we go. Any questions? Deputy Warden Hand.
Um, the suggestion that you would appreciate a letter of support. You mentioned that the application is going forward this month. So I'm not sure on the timeline of when such a letter could be created. Would it be in time for your application?
I, I could answer that one, Wes.
Sure.
Uh, through your worship, so, um, the timeline for a letter of support really is anytime. So even if we were to submit our application, perhaps by the end of this month and the letter or resolution wasn't available by then, that's okay. We would just submit it supplementary. I would certainly work with county staff, um, to make sure that anything was submitted. But timelines are not as important as actually the, the letter resolution itself.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Weber, please.
Uh, not a question, uh, thanks for the presentation. Uh, we got to keep our infrastructure up. And I would move that we endorse a letter of support on behalf of County Council to Enbridge.
Thank you for that. Do we have a secondary, uh, Counselor Brock? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Almost. That's Carrie, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Okay, have a good day now.
You too. Our second delegation is Mr. Sandy Marshall, Executive Director of Bio-Industrial Innovation Canada, BIC. Providing County Council with an update on the activities of BIC. Mr. Marshall.
Yes, good morning and thank you, Warden Marriott and County Council for the opportunity to speak again today. It's been about a year since I was last here to provide you an update on, uh, on our activities at BIC. And I think there's, we've got some, uh, let me put this on presentation. There we go. So, uh, just as a bit of background, I just wanted to remind everyone what we do. I'll go through this quickly because this is a bit of a repeat. Uh, really, our mission is to create jobs and economic value. We're very focused in the Sarnia Lampton region. And our mission is to provide critical investment advice and services to early-stage companies in the clean, green, and sustainable technology space. And we are focused on the commercialization, so we're not focused on research. It's really about creating the jobs and economic value. We do that, and on this slide, this covers kind of the whole portfolio of what we do. But I think what's most critical here to mention is that we are very focused on, on working in the Sarnia Lampton area to develop the hybrid chemistry cluster here. And, and we do that through projects and, uh, and through our investments. Uh, we do, inside the hybrid chemistry cluster, there are a number of very important partners that are within the county that I, I want to recognize here as part of what we do. Uh, the Sarnia Lampton Economic Partnership is clearly, uh, has a role here as, uh, providing local contact support. The Sarnia, Western Sarnia Lampton Research Park is a, is a very The Western Sarnia-Lampton Research Park is a very important asset that we have. And I must say that in my conversations around Canada and elsewhere around the world, the Western Research Park is highly regarded, and most communities wish they had such an asset in their regions when they're getting into regional economic development. Lampton College, we all know how much they've been doing around bringing applied research to the region and providing highly qualified personnel for existing industries, but very much for the new companies that we're working with. And of course, industrial parks, the hard assets we have in the region, which give us our competitive advantage when it comes to commercializing and scaling technologies. We basically manage two programs through BIC. The first one is our Exi Research Cluster, which is funded through Agriculture and Agri-Fruit Canada. And this is really about developing bioproducs for the benefit of agriculture. And this fits very nicely into our region as agriculture is a very important part of Lampton County. We have one or two of our national projects are from the county area, and we're very excited about supporting that. This project or this program is part of the CAP program with the federal government, and it goes through 2023. We're currently working now with AFC to kick off and hopefully get in place a program for the next five years, starting in 2024. Our real nameplate program is the Industrial Bio-Industrial Innovation Network. This is our funding we get from FedDev to support economic development. It's a $50 million, more than $50 million project. We're right now in the third year of a six-year program. And we've received $15 million from FedDev, and then the remaining money comes from Fedric Capital Partners, other partners, and over $6 million coming from BIC itself. And this is really in support of investment in early-stage companies and supporting the commercialization of activities such as building out the regional cluster here. It is not exclusive to Sarnia-Lampton. We are also working on a second cluster location in Maitland-Brockville region in eastern Ontario. And so, but I would say that at this point in time, 50% of this work we're doing at the moment, I think, falls within our region. So of the projects we have locally, there's really four I wanted to highlight that we have actually active and funded programs. One is with Woodland Biofuels, and this project has continued now for two years. And it's really around helping them to develop their early-stage engineering for construction of their first plant, which they've identified the Erlangio site where they would put that. Again, it's still in the engineering phase, and once the engineering phase is complete, there will be a financing phase that has to happen before that plant would be built. But we're getting to the point where we have that information. We also have a project with LCY Biosciences. This is the company that took over the BioAmber assets when they went into receivership here in Sarnia. They are back producing succinic acid at that site at significant volumes. And that asset is becoming a real anchor for us here in Sarnia-Lampton in the industrial biotech space. We are working with them on developing a demonstration line for the production of carotenoids, which is a nutraceutical that is used in a number of applications. We're working very closely here with the Research Park and Lampton College. The third project we've been working on is with a company called Forward Water. This company was from Toronto, or based in Toronto. Technology came out of Queen's University, and they had their offices at the Sheridan Research Park. About two years ago, they relocated down to Sarnia and set up in the Western Sarnia-Lampton Research Park, where they have their labs and their demonstration plant. We've basically been supporting them to set up their offices and their facilities here in Sarnia-Lampton. Fortunately for us, they just closed a funding round for $5 million, and they're now really on a business development path and a growth path. And I think we're going to see some of that impact coming into Lampton County. The fourth project here is much earlier stages with the Duro. We're working with them to develop their chemical conversion technology. And one of the hopes of this project is that it will, once it is in a pilot scale, that that would be located here at the Sarnia-Lampton Research Park. The real purpose or the real important part of the conversation today that I wanted to talk to you about was the investments that the county had provided to BIC a few years ago to help us to execute on our programs. And part of the funding that the county provided to us a few years ago was $500,000, which was put into three equity investments. And the three equity investments here were the three companies Benefuel, Comet, Bio, and Origin. And as we all know, these were early-stage companies when these investments were made. And so we certainly knew at the time we were investing that these were not blue chips, and there was a real potential that one or more of these companies might not succeed. I'm here to tell you today that we have a very good success story here, at least in one of the cases. And I'll start going through them one by one. First, Benefuel was a company that was developing biofuel technology and were planning to, or hoping to build a plant at the Erlangio site here in Sarnia. They very much struggled over the last two or three years to obtain further funding to actually be able to scale and build that plant. Ultimately, Benefuel has shut down the company, and this investment of $125,000 the county put in has now been written down. So at this point in time, I would scratch Benefuel off of our list. But I'll move on to the next, Comet Bio, as we know, was a company that was looking to build or produce cellulose sugars from agricultural residues. They were well along the path to engineer a plant to be constructed at the Transalta site here in Sarnia. The county, $125,000 of the county's funds was allocated to the Comet Bio investment. This company also had the same challenge with getting funding for the full construction of their large plant. And as such, they had to pivot away and start looking at how they were going to progress forward. This company is now producing soluble fibers, and they are doing their... They're using a tolling facility in Europe to produce their first products. So this company is still active, still viable, and we still have the shares in this company. But at this point in time, they're privately held. And so at this point in time, I can't put a value to them or confirm that there will be a value at some point in the future, but they still exist. What is a real positive story for us is Origin Materials. There was a press release yesterday showing pictures of their modules at the Erlangio site being stood up, and that plant is now underway. And I guess, good fortune here, of the $500,000 of county funds that were allocated to these three companies, half of it was allocated to Origin Materials. And so in the next slide, I'll talk a bit more about Origin itself. So when I say here equity investments of $500,000, that's the total. Of that, $250,000 was put into Origin. These shares started trading on the NASDAQ exchange with an implied value for Origin of $1.8 billion. So this company did a reverse, what's called a SPAC. And basically, through that going onto the NASDAQ exchange, they generated $925 million US for the growth of that company. As you can imagine, that amount of funds allowed them to immediately reactivate their initiatives here, and the construction of the plant here in the Sarnia area is a direct result of this significant funding. I will say that Origin now is looking beyond this plant in Sarnia, looking for the construction of their first world-scale plant. This pioneer plant will be used to test out their technologies, to scale, and to produce the first materials for the market. Those shares that the county owns are currently, have been trading over the last three months in the range of $5.18 up to $766 per share. And at the valuation of the shares, which was at the time I prepared this presentation, the $250,000 investment in Origin is now worth over $600,000. So the real positive news here is you've made investments in three. One of them has hit, and at this point in time, there's the potential to sell these shares on the NASDAQ exchange and generate a profit for the county. And so right now, those shares are in BIC's hands, and we look to the county to give us guidance on how you wish to move forward with those shares, if you wish to dispose of those shares and generate this revenue to come back to the county. That is at your discretion, and we will take guidance from you for that. So that's a good news story. As we said, not all early-stage investments are going to be successful. You hope you get a certain proportion of them, and I'm excited to say that your $500,000 investment can now be returned to you in a positive way. The second part, funds that you provide to us was a loan for $2.5 million. And I will say that because of these successful equity investments, we've basically sold shares, and we have that money sitting in our account. We've been paying our payments as per the agreement with the county, a little over $8,000 a month. And those payments will continue through September of 2022. And at the end of the term, which is March of 2023, there is a balloon payment of just about $2.25 million. And I can say to you today that we have those funds, and we are going to keep those in safekeeping so that we can repay the county once this is due. So I'm very happy to say that the trust you put in BIC to use that money to create economic development for the community was not without its risk. But I have to say that I'm very happy to be able to say that we can provide you all of your funds back. We very much appreciate the support. We have seen economic development from this, and we very much look forward to continuing to work with the county going forward. Just one last slide, I wanted to talk about two projects that we're working on that aren't in any active phase at the moment. We continue to work on developing an anaerobic digestion solution for the Sarnia-Lampton area. As I said a year ago, we were in conversations with WESIC, and we continue to do so. And energy is also involved as well. And so this project is still out there. It's progressing very slowly, and so I'm not sure where it'll go, but I just wanted to say to the county that this project is still active. We have a new project that we're looking at, together with Lampton College and the Western Sarnia-Lampton Research Park. We believe there's a real need in Canada for an industrial fermentation commercialization center. In Canada, there is very little fermentation capacity for industrial biotechnology. And because the LCY assets are here in Sarnia, we are getting approached by a number of companies from across Canada and from outside of Canada asking if there is an ability for us to help them scale their fermentations or toll manufacture for them. So we're now conducting a feasibility study to put in a potentially, what I'll call, a mid-scale fermentation facility with fermenters that are at least 10 cubic meters in size. That's not huge when you consider that the largest fermenters at LCY are 1,000 cubic meters. But nonetheless, these are of sufficient scale that they could really attract industrial fermentation technology companies to our region, and I think support economic development. I will say this is, at the moment, a feasibility study only. We need to look at what this would cost, what it would need to operate. Does it have a potential to pay for itself as it goes along? And we are looking at the potential location of the Western Sarnia-Lampton Research Park. So with that, I will shut down my presentation and take questions.
Thank you very much for that presentation, Mr. Marshall. Questions? Counselor Brad, please.
Thanks, Mr. Marshall, for the presentation. Congratulations. Sorry, just having a technical problem there. Congratulations. When this first came to County Council, the ask, it was a challenge for everyone to get into the risk business. And I think you've made some great strides, and it fits into that 20-year strategy we've had with the Research Park, the college, and others to move forward. My question is actually to staff. Any excess funds or dividends that come back to us? What would you recommend? That we set up a special account and put that money in that account? Or would you recommend that just go into general revenue?
To Clarkio, would you be available?
Through the chair, through Counselor Bradley, these funds initially were put in for, it appears to be, economic development purposes. So just speaking generally, the return that you potentially get on your $500,000 investment would basically suggest that you create an economic development reserve fund and retain the money in those funds once you potentially redeem the investment that you have and look at ways of reallocating those funds to wherever the County Council wishes to provide.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Warden, after Mr. Marshall's completed his comments or questions, I'd like to move a motion to do exactly what the treasurer is recommending.
Okay. Another question from Deputy Warden Hand.
I just had a question about, for Mr. Clarkio, the Opportunities Fund. Is that not a place where that type of money can go for other opportunities?
Through the chair, again, another very good question. You already have an opportunities contingency reserve, and it appears to fit within that reserve fund. So if you wanted to contribute to that reserve fund rather than create a separate new one, that's an option that council has. But for organizational purposes, you just want to basically separate those into, with truly an economic development reserve fund, that's an option for you as well.
Counselor Stark.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Mr. Marshall, would the disposition of the shares have any impact, negative impact, on your operations?
No. No, it would not. The shares that are... When we received the shares from Origin, we basically split them in our mind. We split them based on the proportion of ownership of those. We have, the BIC has already sold a small number of the Origin shares. It was our strategy to take our money off the table, so to speak, and then let our profits ride. That was our choice. Those shares that are allocated to the county are sitting there and can be sold at your desire. And will have no impact on us.
Just as a follow-up then, and that was part of my direction. You indicated that you were covering, I believe, $8,333 a month with the proceeds from the sale of the shares. So if we were to dispose of the shares, would that not impact on your cash flow relative to the payments that you're making?
Not directly. We've set the money aside to make the monthly payments as it goes along. So we've basically taken and put the money aside to cover the monthly payments and to have the balloon payment available at the end. So it's not really an issue to us either way. We've got it covered.
So how many shares did that require?
Well, it wasn't all shares in Origin. We had another very successful exit in another company, and we actually sold more of them than we did of the Origin shares.
And finally, with respect to Counselor Bradley's direction, do you specifically have any recommendations for, if we were to bring those proceeds back to the county and invest them into some kind of a venture fund or a reserve fund? Do you currently have suggestions as to where we might redirect them to hopefully see the success that you're talking to us today about?
Yes, I believe that the Fermentation Center could be a very good economic development opportunity for the Sarnia-Lampton region. It builds off of the LCY asset that we have already here. It has the potential to build out the Western Sarnia-Lampton Research Park assets to be able to take advantage of that. And it is my hope that the feasibility... it is my hope that the feasibility study will confirm that there is a business case for this, that it can be self-sustained and generate revenues to grow itself. The question will always come down to, there will be capital requirements for the construction of something like that. And I, I could I could see this funds being used as part of a injection to put that capital in place with funds from other places as well. So because I don't have the answers to the feasibility study, I, I would just ask for patience on that till we can actually provide an answer whether the business case works or not.
And my final, my final question is relative to the, your comment about moving to scale of various opportunities that, that you're involved with. Do any of those options appear to apply to Sarnia-Lampton? I mean, the last thing I'd want is, is a company moving to scale in Europe using our, our funds as the source of the research site?
Yeah. If, if a facility like that was built, it would be intended to be for economic development for within Canada and particularly within Sarnia-Lampton. We have to keep in mind that some of the best assets for building fermentation plants are going to sit within our cluster. We've got L C Y here already as a, as an anchor to that cluster. Lampton College is developing the expertise to be able to run plants like that. We have all the engineering and construction expertise to build these types of plants. I cannot say that Sarnia-Lampton is going to get all of these. I, in fact, I can tell you for sure they will not. But I would say that if you get companies to Sarnia and they get, they get familiar with what we have here and what we can provide, you have the great opportunity to retain a portion of them here.
Thank you very much for your work and your efforts. I mean, the fact that you're referred to as an innovation center to me really speaks to the fact that yes, there is risk. But this is a risk worth taking and I thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
We have Counselor Broad and then Counselor White.
Thanks, Warden Marriott. A question here for Sandy. You had mentioned that you had pulled, or sorry, that you'd cashed in some of your stocks on that particular company that we're involved in. Is it safe to say that you see potential with the remaining stocks in that company? My thought process right now is we pull out our, our $500,000 with investment, leave the $100,000 in there if, if you, if you feel pretty confident in the company moving forward.
Well, I'm first going to say I'm not an investment financial advisor. So I, I've got to put myself on record there. Origin is a very strong company. We, we really like them. They've got a very good leadership team. They come out of the Silicon Valley. They're well-financed out of Silicon Valley. The fact that they were able to go on to the NASDAQ exchange at a valuation of 1.9 billion and almost get a billion dollars of cash out of the deal means they're very well-financed to execute on their business plan. They have a business plan which includes building multiple plants. And they're already working on what they need to do to build their, their second plant, which is the first one beyond Sarnia. So I, we're encouraged by them and we are not currently looking to sell the remainder of our shares. However, they are a startup. They're an early-stage company, just like every other one. BioAmber, we were all extremely excited about BioAmber in those early days and we felt that they were going to be an absolute success. And we saw what happened there even after an investment of almost $200 million Canadian. So I, you know, they're a strong, of our portfolio, they are the second strongest company in our portfolio in our, and our current view. But there's going to be bumpy roads in front for them as there is with every early-stage company.
Thank you.
Counselor White.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Great presentation, great news. I'm very excited. In regards to the anaerobic digestion plans, you indicate that there's a bit of a stall at this point. Help me, help remind me, was this, this was intended to accept the waste coming from the provincial mandate for municipalities to impose a composting service? Is that correct? And if so, what does the current status mean for those plans?
So the concept of this anaerobic digester project goes back much before we got into municipal mandates. The original concept of this was, was spurred back when I was still at the Erelaxio site in a leadership role there. And it was really about building out an anaerobic digester asset that would support the growth of our industrial bioeconomy. We had BioAmber at that time. We later on came comment. When you have facilities like that, they need facilities like an anaerobic digester to help them to treat their wastewater. And so, so from my perspective, this, the genesis of this project was always about supporting the industrial bioeconomy. Now, this is, there's been 10 years since we've been talking about this. So there's a lot of things change and pivot over time. The municipal mandate has created an opportunity for other feedstocks to become available for municipalities. I think the feedstocks or municipalities are an asset to the municipalities. I know you maybe look at them as a cost, but they are an asset and they have the potential to attract businesses to your area to use those. This project, I think, looks upon getting access to those feedstocks. I will say the reason we haven't progressed, the last project we had, was the fact that we didn't have enough feedstock to fill a facility out. So the fact that you've got municipal feedstocks potentially being mandated to be available and the fact that we have other potential feedstocks potentially from agriculture or from, or imported from out around our area makes this project possible. But this project will, I believe, hinge on access to feedstock more than it'll hinge on anything else.
Any further questions? Counselor Arnold.
Thank you very much, Warden Marriott. Sandy, thank you so much for presentation here today. It's great to see you. And I appreciate the leadership that you've shown at the B I C and the team that you have there working away and for the betterment not only of Lampton County, but also Ontario and Canada and the world. As shown by these things going and, and using the technology in Europe and other places. And, and I think that this is one of the reasons why so many folks jumped on board to support the efforts that you folks are doing there. And, and I just want to say thank you. And I hope that you continue on doing these great things for us all. And, and I support, you know, Mike's and Al's comments in regards to setting up the fund and, and moving forward. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate the positive words.
Mr. Marshall, I'd just like to clarify one thing. The, the value that you quoted of 600,000, is that U.S. or Canadian?
That is Canadian.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Any other questions before we entertain Counselor Bradley's motion? Seeing none, go ahead, Counselor Bradley.
Well, I would move that we set up a separate fund and place in that fund any proceeds that come now and in the future from the original loan to the B I C.
Okay, do we have a second or for that? Counselor Stark. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Oh, sorry. Sorry, Deputy Warden Hand, go ahead.
And also, Mr. Ferguson also has a question. Should we, should we also not, I'm just suggesting that we have a directive to sell the shares to, you know, provide that to staff and then to, to go into that account?
I was thinking that would be a separate motion after.
Okay.
If that's okay. Counselor Ferguson?
And I'd like to be a bit direct with this to make sure that the money stays into economic development. It's been there. That's what it's for. Somewhere down the line, we will have times when there will be not good investments. We need a nest egg set in there for economic development. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Plarkio, do you have your?
Yeah, yeah, just through the chair, I just want to clarify a couple, a couple of issues. One, there, the first two and a half million dollars is, is a loan. So once the two and a half million dollar loan is paid off on March 1st, 2023, it's not an investment that goes into, into the fund, into the Economic Development Reserve Fund. It's basically where we would be reducing our, our credit out there. The only funding that would potentially go into the Economic Development Reserve Fund would be any redemption of shares that you have through, through Origin. So if you basically receive $600,000 from, you know, that's our best estimate right now is what the share values are. That's what would be going back into the fund. All we're doing with the two and a half million dollars is we'd be reducing our credit. Just something that I thought I should clarify.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Plarkio. Counselor Stark.
Yes, Mr. Warden, this is a policy direction and as such, I do think you need a, or should have a recorded vote on this.
Okay, recorded vote requested. Any further discussion before Mr. Chief calls the vote? Seeing none, go ahead, please, Mr. Chief.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Sergeant Warden Marriott. The, the motion that's heard on the table open for your vote is with respect to setting up an economic development reserve fund with the proceeds, any proceeds from the sale of any equities that are currently held with B I C. That's the question is before you at this point in time. As I understand it, the question is two directions to sell those equities will be dealt with in a separate motion. So again, the motion before you is to set up an economic development fund to be funded by the sale of proceeds of any equities currently held by B I C on behalf of the county. So that being said, we will start with Counselor Bradley.
Yes, yes.
That is a yes. Counselor Broad?
Yes.
That is a yes. Counselor Cook?
Yes.
That is a yes. Counselor Ferguson?
Yes.
Have a yes, Deputy Warden Hand?
Yes.
Have a yes, Counselor Lucely?
Yes.
Have a yes, Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Have a yes, Counselor Napper?
Yes.
Have a yes, Counselor Ronnles?
Yes.
I have a yes, Counselor Stark?
Yes.
Have a yes, Counselor Bean?
Yes.
Counselor Bean, I have a yes. Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
Counselor Weaver, I have a yes. Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan, I have a yes. Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Arnold, I have a yes. Counselor Bird?
Yes.
Counselor Bird, I have a yes. Counselor Bushi?
Yes.
Counselor Bushi, I have a yes. And of course, Warden Marriott?
Yes.
Have a yes, that carries you in.
Okay, Counselor Bradley, you have your hand up?
Yes, I'd like to, on that second question, I'd like to ask staff to prepare reports for a resolution to come back on the merits of the disposition of the shares and to have that discussion at the next meeting.
Thank you for that. Do we have a second or for that? Counselor White? Any further discussion? Counselor Stark.
Yes, I, I wondered if that report could include and, and may well include a discussion or recommendation as to a partial disposition and, and/or a total disposition so that we may in fact retain some of these shares, which I think Counselor Broad had indicated. I just want to make sure that the report includes that as an option.
I assume that staff would, would be looking at all those options anyway. So is that okay, Mr. Plarkio?
I'd be more than happy to provide the variety of options on dispositions of shares and the recommendations coming back from administration on this issue. For the, for the next meet, November 24th meeting.
Perfect, thank you. Any further discussion? Do you want a recorded vote on this, Counselor Bradley?
No, I don't.
Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Let's carry. Thank you. Well, that brings us to item number 10, minutes of open council, open session council of October the 6th. So we have a motion to adopt those minutes. Counselor Miller, second by Counselor White. All those in favor? Opposed? Let's carry. Thank you. Item number 11, correspondence. First, correspondent number A is a letter from myself dated October 27th to Honorable King Sirma, the Minister of Infrastructure, to do with the accelerated high-speed internet program. Do we have a move by Counselor Broad, second by Counselor Cook? All in favor? Let's carry. Thank you. Moving on to A, correspondence received and filed. There are 17 items. How would you like to deal with these? Counselor Bradley?
Yes, I'd move that we receive and file all the correspondence except item A, which is related to mental health issues and ask in the province for some leadership in certain areas.
Okay, do we have a second or for that? Counselor Ferguson? Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Let's carry. We have direction on A. Ms. Counselor Bradley, did you want to speak to item A?
No, I think it's, it's self-explanatory and makes the point well and the own sound resolution endorses why we should do this.
Okay, so part of that previous motion was to support A?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to clarify that. So that brings us to B, correspondence from member municipalities. Any, any, how would you like to deal with this? Counselor Arnold.
Thank you, Warden. I'll make a motion to support this.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Bradley. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Let's carry. Thank you. Item 12, we have no information reports as well as no items requiring a motion under 13. So that brings us to 14 reports requiring a motion. First of all, A is Infrastructure and Development Services Division, a report dated November 3rd regarding Dawn landfill site request for disposal and service area review. Do we have a motion? Thought one. So Counselor Arnold?
Mr. Warden, I'll just make a motion to receive the report. I don't agree with expanding the area, so.
Okay, do you have a second or for that motion? Counselor Weaver? Discussion on this? So motion, Counselor Broad?
Yeah, thank you, Warden Marriott. We don't have a problem with what's being proposed there. We do have a bit of a problem with it opening up for everybody. Everyone across the county uses it now and it'd be nice if we could leave it like that. But we definitely don't have a problem with the one-time use.
Okay. Any further discussion with what motions on the floor? All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. And 14B is Finance Facilities and Court Services Division, a report dated November 3rd regarding the asset management, management policy. How would you like to deal with this? Mr. Plarkio, do you have anything to add to the report?
Just some introductory remarks. As you know, our, our county has, our 10-year asset management plan expires 2021. And we're looking at updating our asset management plan for the next 10 years in order to be in compliance with Ontario Regulation 58817. This is part of the, you know, good, best business practices. It's important that every community, every municipality in Ontario has an asset management plan policy. This this policy that's here is very common across other municipalities that have asset management policies. One thing to note is that it does not bind a county council to any expenditures or decisions or anything. It's just basically advising the county that we have a policy in place that ensures that our asset management, our assets are prioritized and planned accordingly.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Broad, you had your hand up?
I was just going to move the recommendation.
Okay, we'll go to Counselor Cook then.
I would, I would be seconding that motion.
Okay, so moved by Counselor Broad, seconded by Counselor Cook. Further discussion? All those in favor, please? Opposed? Let's carry. Item number 16, items tabled from previous meetings, there are none. Oh, I'm sorry, I've jumped committee meetings again, minutes. So item number 15, I'll call on Counselor Ronbouts, please.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. I present the Committee AM minutes of October 20th, 2021 for council's consideration.
Thank you. So under Infrastructure and Development Services Division, one and two are correspondence to receive and file. Number three is information reports. Number four was a report requiring a motion. Number five was a report regarding the Woodlands Conservation Bylaw. Number six, under Public Health Services Division, correspondence to receive and file. Number seven is information report. Number eight is a report requiring a motion regarding the student nutrition program. Under Cultural Services Division, number nine is information report. And under there as well, reports requiring a motion is number 10. And under other business, oh, sorry, under Corporate Services Division, number 11 is information report regarding the in-person meeting protocols. And adjournment number 12. Counselor Ronbouts?
Thank you. I move that the Committee AM minutes of October 20th, 2021 be read as or be passed as read.
Do you have a second or? Counselor Weaver? All those in favor? Opposed? Let's carry. Thank you. I'll ask Counselor White to present the PM minutes, please.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. I present the Committee PM minutes from October the 20th, 2021 for council's consideration.
Thank you. Under long-term care with information report is number one. Under Corporate Services Division, number two is an information report on the return to in-person protocols. Under Finance Facilities and Court Services is information reports is number three. Reports requiring a motion is number four, were the report on the new capital grant requests. Number five was a motion of the minutes to exclude the Blue Water Health Grant Request. And number six was a report regarding implementing the optional small business property tax subclass.
Warden Marriott?
Yes, go ahead.
Counselor Bradley has his hand up.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Warden, on number five, it doesn't record who voted which way. I'm going to ask for a recorded vote on, I guess it could be on both. But I I would hope if if council supported number B to include the Blue Water Health Grant Request in the budget, whether they'll get the chance then to look at the context, everything else. I would move a motion to do that if we could defeat, I guess overturn. I'm looking procedurally because we've had this debate before. So I presume that we have to, on number B, is vote not to accept the motion. And then in turn, if that was to be passed, then I can move a separate motion to at least include Blue Water Health in the capital budget deliberations next year.
I'll ask Mr. Tifo for clarification, please.
Yes, thank you, Warden Marriott. With respect to those Committee Minutes, items number four or five, five A and B, address one, the moratorium on all capital grants, whereas number five, especially B, saw an exception to that moratorium for the water health capital grant request that had been previously filed. So if if council wishes to have a specific vote on whether or not to exclude and therefore exempt, exempt, as you say, the water health capital grant request from the moratorium, we would simply pull five B and have a separate vote on five B. And if the vote was to be held in favor of removing the exemption, then of course, that that request with Blue Water Health would go directly to budget.
And I would still move then on number B, five B.
Okay, do we have a second and by Counselor Lucely?
Yes. Yes.
Further discussion?
Can we just make it clear what they're supporting the motion to do? Not uphold the motion, Mr. Tifo? Or we have to defeat the motion that's on the floor, five B, and then have a second motion to say included in the capital budget in next year?
So if currently before council today would be the question as to whether you wish to exempt the Blue Water Health Capital Grant Request that was previously filed from the moratorium. I believe there was a recorded vote required, a request by Counselor Bradley as well on that. And if you were to vote in the affirmative, if you were to vote yes for that for that resolution, then you would exempt Blue Water Health's previous capital grant request. If you were to vote against it, then Blue Water Health Grants Request would be captured by the moratorium and therefore would not be considered, it would not be part of the budget deliberations.
Thank you, thank you.
So so just to simplify, a vote yes means that you're voting to exempt Blue Water Health from the moratorium on capital grants. A vote no, then you're including Blue Water Health in the moratorium.
Deputy Warden Henn?
Didn't know this was going to come up. I'm a board member of Blue Water Health, so I didn't declare any conflict. I believe that I have to do that, so do so now.
Okay, so noted. Counselor Lucely, have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I think the the issue was only to bring it forward for discussion at budget deliberations. There's no money here, it's just to bring it forward. I also want to mention, as Mr. Tifo stated, we did have a recorded vote. But I would certainly request another recorded vote on this as well. But I'd also like to ask Mr. Tifo to be clear on this because I I kind of got lost in the conversation going both ways. If if this motion goes forward, if we vote yes, does that mean that that will come before budget deliberations, Blue Water Health? Or is that incorrect?
That is correct. So if council were to vote yes on this motion, you would exempt the Blue Water Health's previous capital grant request. And by exempting the Blue Water Health's previous grant request, it would go to budget for your final determination on what to do with that grant request ultimately. All other, all other capital grant requests, however, will be subject to the moratorium.
Okay. Ask Mr. Tifo to take the vote, please.
Okay, thank you. We will start with Counselor Stark.
I want to exempt, so I have to vote yes, correct?
That's correct.
Yes.
I have a yes. Counselor Stark, Counselor Bean?
Yes.
I have a yes, Counselor Bean. Counselor Weaver?
Yes.
I have a yes, Counselor Weaver. Counselor White?
Yes.
I have a yes, Counselor White. Counselor Arnold?
No.
I have a no, Counselor Arnold. Counselor Bird?
No.
Counselor Bird, I have a no. Counselor Bushy?
Yes.
Counselor Bushy, I have a yes. Counselor Bradley?
Yes.
Counselor Bradley, I have a yes. Counselor Broad?
No.
Counselor Broad, I have a no. Counselor Cook?
No.
Counselor Cook, I have a no. Counselor Ferguson?
No.
Counselor Ferguson, I have a no. Counselor Lucely?
Yes.
Counselor Lucely, I have a yes. Counselor Miller?
No.
Counselor Miller, I have a no. Counselor Napper?
Yes.
Counselor Napper, I have a yes. Counselor Ronbouts?
No.
Counselor Ronbouts, I have a no. Warden Marriott?
No.
I have a no, Warden Marriott. I'll just complete this.
Can I ask a question how I voted because I said no? I don't know whether it got reported as a no.
No, Counselor Weaver, I have, I have a yes.
No, I was a no.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know how it got switched around, but I thought it.
Thank you. With the, with Counselor Hand having declared a conflict, she's taken out a vote which speaks the denominator at 36 votes on the weighted system. We have a tied vote at 18, pursuant to the rules of council, a tied vote is a negative vote. So that so that fails, which means that the Blue Water Health's request would be subject to the moratorium.
Okay. So we were at number five, that takes us to in the minutes to a report regarding implement, implementing this optional small business property tax credit was number six. Under Social Services Division, number seven is the information report. And report requiring motion, number with report regarding the funding application for provincially delivered housing programs was number eight. And number nine was adjournment. Counselor White, please.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. I move that the Committee PM minutes from October 20th, 2021 be accepted and passed by County Council as read.
Second or? Counselor Ferguson? All those in favor? Let's carry. That takes us to item number 16, items tabled from previous meetings, there are none. And then number 17 is a notice of motion, Counselor Ronbouts.
Thank you. I move that the County of Lampton requests that the provincial government of Ontario remove all mandatory requirements to show proof of vaccination across all sectors in Ontario and return Ontario to a place where everyone is treated as equals. And that this motion be passed to all 444 Ontario municipalities for consideration. And if I have a second or, I'll speak to that motion.
Counselor Bird, you have your hand up. You second that? Okay. Discussion? Counselor Ronbouts?
Thank you, Warden Marriott and County Council. This motion is not about determining the efficacy or safety of the COVID-19 vaccines. I'm not against the vaccine at all. And I even volunteered my time to help make sure that everyone who wanted the vaccine was able to get it. I'm grateful that we have had the vaccine to protect the most vulnerable in our population. This motion is about standing up for the people who feel that their voices are not being heard. The people who are seeing their children being bullied and who feel helpless to stop it. The frontline workers who, for the past year and a half, have been caring for us and for our loved ones and who on Monday lost their jobs simply for making a choice that they felt was best for their health. Now, I was bullied in elementary school and as painful as that experience was, it made me realize how important it is to stand up for those who cannot defend themselves. Over the past week, you've received many emails and phone calls from people across Lampton County asking you to support this motion. Many people told us their reasoning about why they did not want to take this vaccine. They stated facts and figures and gave you documents to support their claims. Most, however, told us about the negative impacts that these mandates are having on themselves, their families and our communities. People like Brooke from Brooke Alvingston, who said that she knows people who have broken relationships with friends and family because of these mandates. She went on to talk about her, the children who have lost friends and are being ostracized at school, how businesses are floundering and how people are discriminating, punishing, humiliating, shunning, bullying, oppressing and being downright cruel to other people because of these passports. Lisa from St. Clair Township told us this past year and a half has been extremely difficult on the mental health of her younger children. And Annette from Lampton Shores conveyed how she and her husband have raised three daughters to understand the importance of inclusion, where everyone is invited, no matter their race, religion, gender, sexual orientation, personality or nationality. She went on to ask us how they can continue to enforce this mindset when our own government, us, are not doing the same. Sarah from Sarnia told us how she and her family used to enjoy participating in organized sports clubs, serving on boards and committees, volunteering at local events, participating in music festivals and supporting local arts and artisans, and how all of those choices are being taken away from her because of these mandates. Her and her family are not sick, they're not a danger to anyone, but yet they are being barred from participating in the activities that they love and that would improve their mental and physical health. So my friends and colleagues, today, you have a choice to make. You can continue to be the person on the playground who tries to bully people into bending to your will. You can be the one who silently looks the other way, not wanting to be bullied yourself. Or you can be the one person who is brave enough to stand up to the bullies and say no. This has to stop. We may only be one county, but if passed, this motion can, will be circulated to all 444 Ontario municipalities for consideration and could be that one pebble in the pond that we need to bring equality back to Ontario. Today, you have an opportunity to be a hero for so many people in your community who are being browbeaten and coerced into doing something against their will. Please, support this motion so that we can return Ontario to a place where everyone is treated equally. Thank you, Warden Marriott.
Thank you. Counselor Bird, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Warden Marriott. So first, I'd like to thank everybody who's been writing in for the last few weeks. I really appreciate their letters in response to Mayor Ronbouts' motion. And we haven't had one, I haven't anyway, I haven't received one negative response. Everybody is supporting this motion. So thank you, everybody that did that in Sarnia and the county. So I want to make some, a really important statement before we vote. And I feel that we've gone from ridiculous to even more ridiculous. During a true pandemic, the virus would be airborne and everywhere and consistent measures would be adopted without any conflicting or contradictory information, which of course is not happening. However, our career political, non-health leaders have decided that this not-yet-isolated or fully-tested COVID-19 virus has some unique properties as follows. One, it is a tall virus because it is only present when we stand up in restaurants, but when we sit down, it vanishes. Two, it is a virus that can tell the time because many businesses opening later and closing earlier due to COVID. So this proves their ability to read clocks and watches. Three, they can recognize chemically-laced hand sanitizer because it stays away from those who use it. Four, they understand metric because if we stand two meters away from one another, we cannot catch anything. They can read because they only go into non-essential places of business and entertainment and avoid the so-called essential places. And best of all, this virus can tell your age because according to the public health department, young children and seniors are the most vulnerable. When, of course, vulnerability has nothing to do with age, but more importantly, to do with your immune system and general state of health, which could apply to any age whatsoever. Let's stay away from highly medical and technical terms and just for one moment, go back to Biology 101, which tells us that to stay alive, we need five basic things. They are oxygen, sunlight, social interaction, healthy diet and exercise, and don't forget dirt and germs. They are the essentials of staying alive. With the currently mandated political restrictions, the five essentials of staying alive and healthy are intentionally being taken away from us. are intentionally being taken away from us. People are prevented from getting the proper amount of oxygen into their lung tissues due to the unhealthy mask-wearing mandates, masks through which particulates can travel up to twenty-seven feet and not just two meters. Sunlight and vitamin D have been in short order due to all the lockdowns and staying home much more. Lack of essential social interactions and celebrations has severely affected people's mental health and well-being and decimated the family structure. The diets of many are no longer healthy due to certain shortages on the food store shelves and greatly increased prices, along with the fact that many have now lost their jobs and cannot afford the healthiest of foods. And the only exercise readily open to us is walking and riding bicycles. But we need the indoor facilities to be open too, so that sports and swimming can take place again. A healthy body cultivates a healthy mind and well-being. Dirt and germs are really vitally important to everyone, but due to over-sanitization of our hands, the healthy bacteria are all being removed. Without dirt and germs, our immune systems cannot build up and maintain their resistance. The COVID injection does not prevent transmission or contraction. So why are they working on number three injection as well as boosters? What are they boosting if nothing is working? Also, there's hardly any change at all, and this is really important, in the Statistics Canada annual death rate reporting, which would indicate that this virus is either brilliant and has eradicated all other causes of death or that all deaths are being put down as COVID. This appears to be not a natural occurrence, but a man-made crisis with all these restrictions being intentionally opposed upon humanity through coercion, bribery, and threats, and using job terminations as their leverage. There has never been so much divisiveness, inequality, discrimination in a country such as Canada, where freedoms, democracy, and peace should reign. This is all totally unconscionable and must be stopped now by applying all the strength and resolve within all of us. The government has already pitted children and their parents against each other, coercively bribing children with all kinds of gifts, while not answering parents' questions truthfully about the risks and the long-term side effects. Next will come threats to stop access to healthcare, driving licenses, et cetera. If we don't stop and stand together and speak out now to stop all this, our freedom of choice is being eroded. And we are only eight days away from November the eleventh, the annual day of remembrance for all those who fought in both world wars, many giving the greatest sacrifice possible to protect and keep our freedoms. For all the past and present veterans, let us make them all proud of the actions we take here today, which will show that we truly appreciate what they all did for us and that we will never forget their sacrifices and for our freedoms. So I totally agree with this current motion to request that the provincial government remove all mandatory requirements to show vaccination passports and return Ontario once again to a place where everyone is treated as equals. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Counsel loosely and then Counsel Napper.
Thank you, Ward Marriott. Just, I have a bit of a concern for some of the things that have happened. I find it unprofessional for a county councillor to send out all our emails for personal use. I know we're all accessible and can be contacted, but I just find it unprofessional to send all of our names and emails out to different individuals, and I'll stop there. Thank you.
Counsel Napper.
Yes, thank you very much, Ward Marriott. Can you through the movement seconder there? How are we on like Ontario? How's it on like Alberta? I look at Alberta there and I don't know if that's a flu epidemic out there or is that a COVID epidemic? And what they're doing, and they're sending patients down and plugging up our hospitals now. How, is there, like, I really got mixed emotions on this. I just find that hard to, to agree with a lot of the stuff here. It seems to me it's more than a flu, and I have real concerns.
Okay. Counsel Bradley, you have your hand up.
I'm just asking for a recorded vote.
Okay, sorry. Deputy Ward in hand.
I just wanted to make a comment in regard to the letters. So when Counsel Bird said that all these letters in support of the motion, people were directed to support the motion. There was not a note going out asking people not to support the motion. So that's not a fair balance, as far as I'm concerned, on what the letters mean.
Okay. And the other Counsel Rumbouts.
Just in response to that, people were not directed to support the motion. People were directed to give their opinion on the motion. And they, so they had the option to support or not support the motion. And everyone's email and phone number was taken directly from the public website. So it's, was completely accessible to everyone in the public.
Counselor White, you had your hand up first.
Thank you, Ward Marriott. I'd just like to remind everybody that since this notice of motion was first presented to us, the province has released a framework for ending all mandates by March twenty twenty-two. And I think, you know, given the uncertainty of the last year and a half, almost two years by the time this wraps up, I think one of the greatest frustrations most people had, you know, from what I've heard, is simply not knowing. And finally, I think for the first time since the pandemic started, we actually, we actually know with some certainty what the plan is. We're not looking at it day-to-day. Things might change. We actually have a plan. I would hope that that is of some comfort to people. I agree that there's a level of coercion in this. I agree that maybe we needed to try some other things before we got to this point. And I certainly hear the frustration from folks, and I understand it. I've got some of my closest friends who are on, I would say, that side of the equation. And we still have respectful dialogue. I do want to thank everybody who has taken the time to write. Most of them, again, were very respectful in their approach, and I want you to know that you're heard. The problem is, we're here right now. I don't see an alternative. I'm not prepared to go the way of Alberta and to allow our system to get clogged again and to put more people at risk. And that is the difficult part of where we are right now. It's not even our decision to make. I understand that. I understand. We're simply asking us to prod the province a little bit. But I think the province has already responded. They've created a plan. It's slow, as it should be when we're dealing with medical evidence. And I believe that by March, most of these issues will be resolved. Hopefully, they will be resolved.
Okay. Counsel Napper, you have your hand up.
I changed my mind.
Okay. Counsel Bird.
Ward Marriott, through the chair to Mayor Napper, I'd like to just respond to your comment. I understand people have concerns when they see different provinces doing things in different ways, which relates back to what I said about lack of consistency. However, I think one, one way, if you don't have time to read everything everywhere all the time, which is pretty difficult to try and keep up with all the global news and the national news, but there's one place I find that you can go to, which might help you in this. If you go to the Statistics Canada site, if you have no time to do anything else, just that one site, and look at their annual death rate. And I went back to nineteen fifty, but if you want to just go back the last five years, overall, for the entire country, Canada, has been approximately zero point three eight percent change. That's a very, very small change in the annual amount of deaths. And that's why I say this was a clever virus. It either eradicated all other forms of death or they're putting everything down as COVID. And that was something we did discuss with Dr. Renade a few months back. And he didn't say that that was wrong. He just said, and you can go back and watch this, that it's a gray area. All deaths are written down as COVID, either of COVID or with COVID because of the new admittance procedures going into hospitals where they test people, even if you're unconscious. They give you a test and it goes on the record. You might have come in with a major heart attack and you're unconscious, but it might show that you're positive. You may not have been sick, but it shows you're positive. So when you die, it just says died with COVID or of COVID. And that's where I think all the numbers have got really vastly out of line. So I come back to say to all of you, please check Statistics Canada, and you'll see the overall death rate for the last five years is zero point three eight percent change. I hope that helps.
Further questions, comments? Counsel Arnold.
Thank you, Ward Marriott. And just a couple of things from my point of view. And I agree with Counsel White when he talked about there's the restrictions would be lifted in a controlled, methodical way by the end of March. So it's moving along, and nothing can take place really quickly. I know that many of you have people that you're very familiar with that have either passed away from complications that COVID had that indicated on the death certificate, especially in the older adults that hurried their life away very quickly. I know many, of course, around me in my age that were very close to death, and they did survive. However, I know one in their forties that's still on a ventilator. Try and tell their family that COVID is not real and that it's just something that, you know, we've decided to do. The other piece that I had was my daughter's neighbor had COVID brought home from daycare. And this is a number of months ago now. All of the family recovered except Dad, who's a COVID long-hauler now. He cannot work. So there's a family that's directly impacted. And I guess when I look at direct impacts, I really struggle with trying to hurry up something that's been designated that we're going to methodically move through this, open up, get rid of all the mandates in a length of time, and reevaluate as we go. I think it's very good that that is going through. I appreciated Jackie's comments about supporting vaccinations. I know you did, Jackie. You worked very hard helping those that wanted to get vaccinated to be vaccinated. And if we go back to the only real pandemic that I was familiar with indirectly and directly, I wasn't here, didn't pay attention much to the SARS because that was something that was done in the Toronto area more than throughout the province of Ontario. It just got looked after. But polio was the one that I remember and being vaccinated for. In the worst year, which was nineteen fifty-three, there was nine thousand cases Canada-wide and five hundred deaths. And yet I believe most of us here and our parents and grandparents made sure that we got vaccinated from having that horrible debilitating disease. And at that time, you talk about new and uncharted vaccines. There was a lot of complications from the first one that was out, and yet parents were lining up because they did not want their children to have to go into an iron lung. But to go and fast-forward to today and for the last eighteen months, I'm really getting tired of the threats, the misinformation that has been sent out to me after I research it. I'm tired of being compared to a Nazi and that the vaccine mandates are the same as the persecution and the killing of Jews, intellectuals, and LGBTQ people that went back into the Second World War. And I'm tired of it. I'm really weary. I understand that people are frustrated. They want to have wide open. They want us to respect the fact that they want to choose not to be vaccinated, and that's their choice. But with those choices, you decide not to do certain things. I choose not to be around people as much as possible because I'm so afraid for my parents. And yes, maybe they wouldn't die directly from COVID, but if they do get infected because I brought COVID into their house and this was a contributing factor to an early death for them, I don't know how I personally would live with it. Same with my grandbabies. So I try very hard to stay away from most people. And, you know, there's a lot of people out there that I respect their opinion. I'm like others that have friends that have chosen not to be vaccinated, and I respect that. But I respect it at arm's length from them, too. We'll chat at a distance and have those good conversations. And, but they don't threaten to kill me because I vote a certain way on a motion coming to County Council today. This is where I'm concerned. You talk about being bullied. You know, I don't feel like an elected person should be bullied into making a decision that's going to be addressed anyways. And it's going to be addressed methodically over the next few months. So thank you, Ward Marriott. I apologize for taking up so much airtime.
Thank you. I have Counsel Bushy first, and then Counsel loosely and Counsel Rumbouts. Yeah, I'm gonna, we're gonna have to limit it to no more than speaking twice, like our bylaw says. Go ahead, Counsel Bushy.
Just one comment. In spite of the good intention of the, of the motion, at this time, it will further divide the community and the public. That's all I'm gonna say. So I'd be voting against it.
Counsel loosely.
Thank you, Ward Marriott. Just, I was pleased to hear what Counsel Arnold and White said. That makes so much sense. I will not vote in favor of this motion. I also think putting it in context, if we have a population in this county of a hundred and thirty-five, roughly thousand people, we get seventeen letters of objection. You have to put it in context, but I will not be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Counsel Rumbouts.
I apologize if there was any threats come your way. No one deserves that. And I don't support that at all. I've received threats myself, so I understand that makes it very difficult. This is a very divisive issue, and it's, it's been very challenging for all of us. I recognize that. The point of this motion is to support the provincial government in making the decision to open up things. And I think it must be difficult for them as well, having to make that decision because it is so divisive. So to have that support coming from the lower-tier municipalities, I think, would help them in that decision. I do have a lot of empathy for any families who have suffered from this illness. But I also have empathy for those who have severe addictions because of the lockdowns and because of the things that are happening to them as well. And a couple of months could be the difference between one life and another. We're seeing depression and suicide rates go through the roof. I don't want more division in this county, in this council. That is not my intention at all. My intention is to help the people who are suffering right now. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel Bradley.
I didn't intend to stay out of this debate. I've made comment many times at this level and other levels in the media about this issue. And Steve Arnold, the mayor of St. Clair, eloquently spoke to this issue. And for all of us in leadership positions, I've been living with it for nineteen months. My car hasn't been parked in my parking spot for the last number of weeks because of threats. And that includes in-person threats. I tried to move on from that and recognize the Ford government with their plan. It's an orderly plan. Counsel White had talked about it. It says we're going to do this, this, and this. I do think it's a plan that's going to probably run into some changes by the nature of the disease we're dealing with. And the reason I was going to stay out of the debate, the, the materials that have been sent out and the comments being made by certain counselors. In my time on this council, going back to when I first joined, I've never heard so many irresponsible comments that aren't fact-based. And, you know, as leaders, we're different. We're not like Joe Smith down the street or Mary Smith down this street. We're in a position, we have a platform, and we can influence people. And this debate really should be going on in the legislature, if people feel strongly about it, where the decisions are made and the, and the policies are developed. So I would, you know, and I'm embarrassed for Lampton County that this issue continues to come up, whether it be not supporting masking, fighting back on vaccinations, the only place on the province where the vaccine bus had issues. And why was that generated? It's by this climate of hate that we're receiving from the anti-vaxers. And I can tell you, these comments will then continue to generate that. But I want to thank the people who are pro-public health. I want to thank all those people on the front line of public health because the minority on this, on these comments today do not support what the public really wants and what the public has come to appreciate our public health system. And our concern as leaders about their health and getting them out of this. And we can do it, and I think the Ford plan is the way forward. So again, I've asked for a recorded vote on this issue and ask you to call the question.
Okay. Counsel Bradley asks call the question. We have a seconder for that. Counselor Stark, all in favor? Councillor Stark, all in favor? Married, uh, recorded vote please, Mr. Tiffo.
Yes, thank you. We will start with Councillor Broad on the motion.
No.
That's a no, Councillor Broad. Councillor Cook?
No.
Councillor Cook, I have a no. Councillor Ferguson?
No.
Councillor Ferguson, I have a no. Deputy Warden Head?
Sorry, no.
A no, Deputy Warden Head. Councillor Loosely?
No.
Councillor Miller?
No.
Councillor Rambach, I have a no. Councillor Napper?
No.
Councillor Napper, I have a no. Councillor Runbouts?
Yes.
Councillor Runbouts have a yes. Councillor Stark?
No.
Councillor Stark, I have a no. Councillor Beane?
No.
Councillor Beane, I have a no. Councillor Weaver?
No.
Councillor Weaver, I have a no. Councillor White?
No.
Councillor White, I have a no. Councillor Arnold?
No.
Councillor Arnold, I have a no. Councillor Bird?
Yes.
I have a yes, Councillor Bird. Councillor Bushy?
Oh.
Councillor Bushy, I have a no. Councillor Bradley?
No.
Councillor Bradley, I have a no. So that, that motion fails.
Uh, Councillor Loosely.
Uh, my screen got kicked out. I just want to make sure that you did hear my vote.
Yes, we did.
Thank you.
Mr. Tiffo, did everyone vote?
Uh, I think he missed myself.
Oh, sorry, I did. Ward and Marriott.
That's a no.
That's a no. Yes, sorry with that.
Okay, uh, Councillor Napper.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that it's the last line. It'd also be resolved that this motion before the all four hundred and forty-four tier of municipalities for their consideration. Uh, uh, I'd like to, to consider our, our answer on that. Maybe it's mute.
Mr. Ward, if I am, I mean, normal procedure, if the motion doesn't pass, the motion's not leaving the room.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say too. So thank you.
Thank you. I just.
Uh, moving on to item number eighteen, other business. Uh, we had nothing down. Uh, Councillor Bradley?
Yes, this is a request to staff. Perhaps it's in motion anyhow. Could we have a full update on the homeless issue and the plans for this winter at the next meeting, which is a couple of weeks away? I think it's really important. We all know what's happening out there and it's not good. So I think, and we're seeing what's happening in London and other places are struggling with the issue. So I think it would be really important for us to have a full update at the next meeting on what the steps are to deal with the increased numbers of homeless people in Lampton County. I'll give a motion if that's what you need.
Please. Okay, moved by Councillor Bradley. We have a second or Councillor Arnold? Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those, that's carried. Thank you. Anything else under other business? Uh, Councillor Runbouts?
Yes, thank you, Ward and Marriott. As Chair of the Committee AM, it's been brought to my attention that the Good Roads Conference is scheduled from Sunday, February twenty-seventh to Wednesday, March second in Toronto, and it is supposed to be a live conference as far as I know. Um, the last day does conflict with the deliberations for the Lampton budget, which is scheduled for March second. I would make a motion that we move the deliberations to the Thursday, March third, so that anyone who is traveling back from that conference is able to attend those deliberations.
Thank you. I have a second by Councillor Arnold. Any further discussion? All in favor of that? That's unanimous. Thank you. Uh, any other business? Seeing none, moving on to notice the bylaws. Mr. Tiffo?
Thank you, Ward and Marriott. It's moved by Councillor White, seconded by Councillor Miller, by law twenty-one of twenty twenty-one. As certainly to be taken as read at first and second time.
All in favor? That's carried.
It's moved by Councillor Miller and seconded by Councillor White, by law twenty-one of twenty twenty-one. As certainly to be taken as read at third and final time.
All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. That moves us to adjournment. Um, the next meeting to be held November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. So I'll take a motion to adjourn, please. Councillor Weaver and Councillor Ferguson, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you.